Mayor, sir, I'm gonna grab my computer.
What's going?
Everybody wants to, yeah, I'm just gonna grab my computer.
We need two for tomorrow. So. Double check my R S D Ps.
Yeah, we have a quick poll, give me thirty seconds.
Yeah. Awesome, wasn't it yes?
Hey.
I'm a province.
He is here, yeah.
Okay.
He's probably in the US. Good stuff, personally.
Yeah.
Anyone else coming?
I don't think so. Second.
Don't that seem?
All good stuff.
It's unbelievable, that area there, it's crazy.
Oh, yeah.
Hey.
Welcome, welcome to our, our space.
I don't remember that from back.
Maybe it didn't used to be that way.
It could be, it could be, I have a suspicion it's like a very, it might be a very, that's like. Not great.
And the blowing order.
But. I had an invitation to have a tour of that, that section.
The air hand for a public scene?
Oh, yeah. There.
Black again, anybody?
If you just.
The white night.
If you just didn't run at nighttime when a lot of the work session meetings were, you know, six, seven o'clock at night.
That is.
No, I don't think.
Just get a real one second.
Okay. Alright. Call this meeting to order, this is a rules and procedures committee meeting. It's two P M Tuesday, October twenty ninth. Want to do a roll call. For all the members that are present. Also member Cal. Present. Thank. What's the number, Costi is absent. And. Also President Medevitski is joining us, executive chair. And I am present, so. The other thing we have on the agenda is R L twenty four dash two fourteen, a local law to establish a new chapter. Unlicensed cannabis activity in the city of Binghamton code. So submitted by Mayor Pram. So. Think we got some of this in the press about the reason for. You bringing this forward, but you just want to give us an overview, then we can dive further into the actual such that's.
Sure, so since the legalization of adult use cannabis in the. Uh, allowing of retail establishments, um, there's been this phenomenon where. Uh, because the, because cannabis has been completely, you know, decriminalized, legalized, that, um. Shops that specifically sell cannabis products, they're not licensed by New York State for operating a lot of communities across the state, and Binghamton is no exception. Uh, with the retail legal cannabis market, um, being. Kind of pushed out by the state, the fact that we have one in Binghamton, soon to have at least one or two more, um. In addition to the tax implications of cannabis being bought and sold, uh, in the city without going through proper channels. These illegal illicit shops are also selling untested, unverified products. Um, they're not really, they're not following any of the rules that are set by the state. Um, and some of them are in operation in close proximity to schools, daycare, as other sensitive facilities. So the state of New York. Is authorized to enforce, uh, its cannabis laws that relates to illegal retail shops. And has had some enforcement actions, uh, within the city. But. Newly to the cannabis law. They're empowering and allowing for local municipalities, counties or, or local municipalities to adopt their own. Local provisions that mimic and mirror what the state of New York has done. To continue to product, protect public health, public safety. And really crack down on these unlicensed illegal operators. In some cases, these, uh, businesses are running afoul of our local planning and zoning, uh, laws. Sometimes they are operating as something else, when in fact they are a sticker shop or, uh, illegal cannabis. And. For our residents, number one, if you're buying cannabis from these illegal places, it's possible you're getting ripped off, it's possible you're buying a counterfeit product. It's possible you're buying a product that has unwanted chemicals in it. Um. We believe that a lot of these shops are not discriminating, uh, between adults and minors. When they're selling products and, you know, given the sheer size of a mostly cash business. Uh, large amounts of cash in illegal products also can lead to violent activity, and we have seen some, some. Uh, matters of violent crime associated with these illegal sticker shops. So basically, this is a law to allow for better local regulatory, uh, inspections of cannabis, uh. In the city of Binghamton, the illegal market. I'm a huge supporter of legal cannabis, I was really proud that Binghamton had the first retail store outside of New York City. Um, I'm in support of adult use, recreational use. But. The illicit market is stealing from taxpayers, it's dangerous for the products that they're selling. And it just goes to back quality of life in the neighborhood business districts in downtown we have in the city. Robert obviously did the legal research, uh, side of, you know, on this, in, you know, can certainly answer me any legal questions.
So did you? Was this hold from? State resource that you?
Yeah, so the New York State cannabis law largely dictates what we can and can't do. So a lot of the provisions in this local law essentially are taking sections out of the cannabis law. Tweaking a little bit to fit for what the city's doing. And that's what it is, um, and that's what. Everything is fairly distributed is done so far. Um, I know that city can't take what passed it so far that I know of, um, Steuben, Shimon, Suffolk County have all decent reduced it. Shimon County actually just had a public hearing on it yesterday.
Which is fun.
Shimon County. Yeah. Um, so this is.
They're doing it at the county level, instead of the city level?
Yeah, so the, the law allows for cities and counties to enact this and enforce it, uh, through the county attorney's office or the city's attorney. City attorney's office, um, in terms of the knowledge to seal that the law allows for. So basically what the law does is. It allows local. Police, code enforcement to go and form a regulatory inspection, basically see, are you compliant with O C M regulations? Are you properly licensed? And if you're not. You get an order basically saying, or a notice violation basically saying, you're doing something wrong, you need to stop. And if they continue, then we can go to the city court and get an order to seal that. Business so that it's still on regular operate. Um, the analogy would be like they're going lockdown now that we have their own nuisance properties. Uh, rather than having to get to, you know, eighteen points, it's, you have two. Instances where you've been selling. And you've been told not to. Um.
So that's, that's what this versus, where is that like current?
That's what this is.
Okay.
So, and then this is all under the auspices of O C M, so like this local law has to be filed with O C M. We notify O C M as we're taking enforcement actions, so there's still, O C M's still like. Involved, rather than having it all decentralized through O C M, basically having to report. Up to all me, hey, who's what's going on? We need, you know, someone to come down and check out what's going on, if we can do it here. Just basically pushing the power out more locally versus having it all centered, having the. The parts around to get enforcement, so the idea is to speed up and make enforcement more like.
So. I mean.
That's a statement.
So. Murder is illegal at the state.
Yes.
Right, you do not need a local ordinance to, for our police to go up. Rest somebody in the, so why on earth is that not just a general law that's of course been on any. Like, did they put on this measure of making every municipality? Or even different levels, I mean, you know, county levels and or town. It seems like a very individual way. So it, it, it's, it's more, it's regulatory, it's like you're there.
That's a big part of it, right, so rather than having sort of the general, you know, coming along that implies everyone in state, this isn't. None of this is a criminal proceeding, it's all civil based. So when we go to court, you know, file a petition saying, hey. You know, these are the regulatory issues that we have. And it's basically allows your cities and counties to size it something that is worthwhile for us to pursue, there might be cities or counties where. They don't have a whole lot where this cannabis activity going on because, you know.
Oh, really? Finally.
No. You know, like we, you know, like.
Sure, there's, there's, there's.
There, there's parts of the state that aren't as populous and where it's just not enough of an issue where. You know, why am I gonna set all this stuff up for the, you know, five times he comes out a year, I'll just call soon. Whereas when you get into more metropolitan areas or in the, you know, cities. You're starting to deal with this issue on a more frequent basis, it comes into that quality of life aspect where you just see it far. And so you can then say that to, and say, hey, it's worth it for us to enact it, go after these places.
I guess, uh, I've seen like a number of shops with like the, the illicit cannabis shutdown, something or other sign on it. Um. So. I guess I'm curious to know, like. Feel like I've seen some places shut down already. Um, but what, what did, what did it take to get to that point? For those places, uh, that would be, that's different from this, because I.
So I'm not, currently anything that's shut down has been done by O C M.
So has O C M taken action on stuff in Binghamton?
I understand.
Yes, it's been a combination of both of the notices of violation, and there's also been, uh, I believe at least one order to seal. But on that, uh, order to seal, uh, very shortly thereafter, they were back in operation in violation of the O C M. It's basically the thought processes is that there's only so many O C M enforcement folks.
To get around to, so it's the next time somebody can come down to Albany or whatever.
That's correct. Whereas if.
We're being at.
At a local level, we can go out there every day.
So, um, it sounded like. There are different options that you could pick from to build this.
Pretty limited, I mean.
Yeah, so I'm, I'm curious what, what you didn't choose when making this.
So most of the options involved, like. Who's doing what, um, it's like for counties, mostly the counties push a lot of the enforcement into their sheriff's department. Um, that's who makes sense, um.
Do we have any movement from any other municipalities locally or the county?
I, I have not heard of any.
I mean, by, by county. And I don't know that any other municipality would be able to cast this as the law allows.
So I mean, I'm saying. Mainstream, uh, I mean, John's city is seeking a lot of the issues that we have, that's the thing, because they're kind of, that. Phillips versus Tannen Union sort of issues or not.
Yeah, so. As I understand. As I understand it. The cannabis law only allows counties and cities to do this. And so.
So.
I don't believe the.
No, John's city or Tannen Union couldn't.
I don't believe. They could ask the county to do it, um, and like some of the county setups allow for. Uh, like. Inter municipal agreements to help with enforcement. Um, but again, so like that's an option that like the city's not gonna use because we're gonna enforce ourselves and like we use that sort of agreement. Um. Similarly, there's counties that push some of the enforcement pieces like to the Department of Health. We don't have a department. At the city. You just have enforcement and the police department, really the two entities. Um, that. Makes sense you're being involved with this sort of. Enforcement.
Uh, I think, yeah, you referenced like sticker shops and other, uh, shops, but there's part here that it says including any vehicle. For such business or inspections of any place a business is located, so I think. That kind of. My mind, that just like broadens this. A bit further than just a sticker shop.
Well, those vehicles have to use as part of the operating, right, it's not like, oh, you know, someone drove their personal vehicle to this store and drove it away. That's not really what this is intended to cover.
Right.
Now they have a cargo van that they're making deliveries with. That's what this is targeting. Um. What about the, uh? The emerging issue? Um. The.
Hemp base. I have never heard of words. But they're hemp base.
Oh, C B D.
No, no, they're not C B, so they, the, the hemp laws have a pass, right, so you can have. Hemp fiber and smoke will happen, C B D, that's all under a certain percentage of THC. But they figure out how to. Like enriching, like enriching uranium, right?
Yeah.
Like you can go through a process within this low concentration THC, and what comes out the end. Is high, you know, so that's in a gray area, or we figured that out now, or where is that, and does this have any impact on? That market, it seems to be emerging.
So. I can't say I researched this, so I'm not positive as to what the answer is, what I think the answer would be is that if they're taking hemp and concentrating that. For purposes of increasing the THC levels and using that. To make some sort of. Product or just selling it as is. I think that would probably end up running afoul of cannabis law in New York State, uh, sort of exceeding. What those limits are, and basically going outside of camp and into the cannabis stuff. It's what. It's hard to think that would work. Um, which would then. Allow.
I am sure.
On the level of ancient.
Yeah.
That would allow us under this law to go ahead and.
There's also a provision that the intent of this is not to enforce against stores that have a de minimis. And I think of some of the. It, it's in here about like, there's a gas station and. So there's a display of that, why are you mentioning hemp, THC, whatever, and that's the only thing in the store, and it's the only product. That they're marketing and selling. Um, it would not subject that store to closure, right? This is for the purpose built. You know, they're selling cannabis cannabis products in, in large volume.
The, the lockdown piece, obviously we could still issue for there's no it's a violation, it's not gonna be that, but. The, the laws intended to be like, oh, you know, one percent or point one percent of your business is selling these products, we're gonna shut the whole thing down. And that's not what this is targeted at.
So. What are the mechanisms we see this working? So. Administratively, somebody calls. Who? When the call comes in the city hall.
Yeah, so any, any person may file a written complaint with police department, which alleges or asserts the existence of an unlicensed activity.
The written complaint to the police department, not code. Yes.
It goes into the police department. Um, we have it set up so that code can help with doing the regulatory inspections. But all the complaints be funneled through the police department. Police department's gonna be, and the liaison in the O C M in terms of reporting what's going on and everything.
Thanks.
Um. Mostly because. Because the safety issues, the person gonna be involved with. Each of these complaints, because if you ultimately have to go in and lock down in place. They're the ones who can be highly involved with. Um, they're also the ones, because this allows procedure of. Marijuana, marijuana products, part of those lockdowns, obviously the police are a quick, really, quite a handle, they can dispose of that stuff, so. That's why that was set up that way.
One of my go to questions is. Um. How does this? Like, does this business impact the different districts? Like, is this something that we're seeing from primarily in, I don't need the street names or business names, but like. Even if it's just east side, west side, south side, is that like? Where is this problem happening and is it literally across the city or is it?
I would say that it's, um. Likely happening in all districts and, you know, specifically. Uh, there's been activity on Broad Avenue, Glenwood, uh, Avenue. Uh, Henry Street, and then downtown, there's multiple properties. And, you know, again, when information is developed.
Yeah.
Information is developed, though, for other businesses that may be doing this, uh. Uh, it's likely that they're happening in those places.
So I guess, how do you, how do you contend with, uh? Basically, if this was to pass and we were to expend resources like going into these shops. Uh, they're shut down, but then there's just like a, a new avenue for, you know. Felicit cannabis to move. Throughout. The city as. As it does, I don't, I guess that's kind of my. It's like we, we didn't.
They push it.
Yeah, we like decriminalized. Cannabis for, for a reason, and I think part of that is that like, there's a lot of. There was a lot of issues with the criminalization, but then it's just like, it's. I don't think we. Won the war on drugs necessarily, so. Uh, that was part of the argument to, to get this passed. But without like the federal. Federal piece in place where it's like nationally legalized. I don't know, that's, that's kind of like bigger picture.
Yeah, so and strictly as it relates to cannabis, um. You know, there's not, uh, like Bampton Police are not. Leading, uh, undercover investigations is related to cannabis, right?
Yeah.
Or people that are maybe dealing cannabis, that's not a focus, but the issue becomes when you put up signs in a storefront across from. Our baseball stadium, we're near a daycare, we're near the downtown area, um, and are actively kind of selling that, and you're, you're actively putting out in. The plain view and in public, potentially dangerous products. Um, you know, if something is happening in the black market standpoint, that's not within public view or not, unless we don't know where these places are. It is a good argument to say, hey, look, it's decriminalized, you know, it's not really necessarily a huge public safety issue. But if it's happening in our business districts, um. State law requires that that can't happen, and this provides us another tool, but the other thing, part of it is that we get three percent every dollar that's sold.
You know, you, you're really excited about that.
Yeah.
And it's reflected in the budget that you presented.
So, we get three dollars or three percent, and so, you know, you have to. Retailers have to pay sales tax, and those that don't get in trouble with the state and they're shut down. Uh, these retailers are not paying their taxes, they're not paying their fair share, and so that's an important motivation for why we need to, we need not have an open cannabis market in the city.
I'm, no, like, not, nothing about, it was cannabis stuff, but, um. How hard is it for these businesses to get legally able to sell? Like, is there, is there a path, or if, once they've, once they've gotten hit up with one of these. Things and, and whatnot, then are they?
You're asking what's the licensing procedure?
Yeah, like, I, was that gonna prohibit them from getting a license in the future?
Uh.
Because they've already, you know, broken the rules.
It makes it much more difficult. I don't know if it's impossible, um. And. Certainly, O C M has. They revamped that office and they've started to process licenses quicker, uh, which we've seen from the city in terms of the process and stuff. Um. And. So. There's a path forward, I think part of this is that, you know, you're not gonna stop every black market transaction cannabis, and that's not what this is intended to do. You know, you're not gonna stop everyone from, you know. Swapping stuff, doing whatever. What the whole goal of this law is, and the whole licensing thing is. Not having commercial operators. Acting outside of any oversight from the state. And so if, if you wanna operate commercial scale operations of selling cannabis, you need to go get your license. And if you don't do that, you're not operate, we're gonna come in and shut you down, you know, again, this isn't, we're not looking for someone that. Who's making five hundred bucks off like black market cannabis sales, we're looking for someone that's doing, you know. Ten, fifty, a hundred grand in cannabis things. I, I think we can all agree the state is not gonna go star for helping them out. Licensing and. Getting commercial operations off the ground. They, they did a good job with the growth, you know, the, the growing aspect of it, so we ended up with a new supply, and then we had no place to sell it at.
Mm-hmm.
And I think that's gonna gradually. Kind of an equal degree of my fault, but. Summer red.
I think that's very accurate.
So I think like the comparison to just like liquor licenses, it's like the, it's just. One, it's just like liquor stores can't, can't sell to minors, they can't sell to, they can't sell moonshine. But. It's just like, it was easier to get people. The license. That would, I think that would be. The way to do this, or like, just a different way to tackle the same problem. And then still have the compliance that they'd have to follow through with that license.
Yeah, and there are, um, I think the clerk's office has received them, I mean, there's new, uh, stores, retail group stores that are gonna be opening, uh, here. Hopefully soon.
We got three lots. We started. I'll just clarify, I know that you can't be like a bodega or deli. And a licensed marijuana, like an O C M licensed marijuana facilitator, in the same way that you can't be a liquor store that also sells like. Food products, like, they have a similar approach to regulations. The same way you can't sell like.
Right, like a Wegmans, you have Wegmans, and then you got a liquor store. Liquor store that's not called Wegmans.
So it's not like, like a retailer, like Kavanaugh's, but then just get an add-on, O C M marijuana license.
Yeah.
That's just been our, like, with dealing with O C M regulations, they're clear about establishing a separate.
And the other thing too is that there's no mechanism for. The illegal stores to get wholesale. Approved New York State products, because the growers and the processors cannot sell to entities that are not licensed retailers in the state of New York. So all of the products that you walk in are either, are likely counterfeit from another state, not as part of the. New York ecosystem. Not as part of the New York ecosystem. And, you know, there are times that a, that a story and they tested these products and found that there's some, some pretty serious come up. Well, this is part of the unregulated market.
So, uh, what was kind of listening to guys have already come forward with this, I guess, I have a couple of examples.
Yeah, so I believe the city of Canada did what passed it.
Shimon.
Suffolk, uh, Stupan, both at least introduced it. I know Shimon. At least the county legislature passed it and they had their public hearing yesterday.
So it's mostly been counties?
Mostly in counties.
Not above Syracuse, Rochester, Albany.
Not yet, although Syracuse had a law that was enacted prior to the change. Cannabis law that was upheld earlier this year, allowing them to go and shut down.
They did on their own.
They did it on their own before the legislative change. Uh, so their, their laws are different, but they do have something in their books. I can look and see if anything else has been done in terms of Buffalo or Rochester, Albany, but, um. Uh, this was just enacted and. So people, they, they passed all this stuff, so it's a kind of a new thing, um. New York City. So in New York City, again, a little different setup because it's New York City, but as part of passiveness. Um, the legislature had a separate section dealing with New York City on its own. And its own system that, again, is similar to this in terms of having those. Regulatory inspections and ability to go and shut them down. Um, it just. She's in charge. What's a little different because it's New York City.
Yeah, this, this part made me, so obviously there's people that grow cannabis at home. And would like use it for making their own, whatever, brownies or. Other baked goods, but like when you have unlicensed pro, so that would be processing. So if their neighbor complained about them. Doing what's legal on a state level, that's still creative means for. Like the city to.
No, no, this doesn't apply to residential.
Okay.
Uh, buildings and it's in H two B scope of inspections. Outlines basically the scope that these regulatory matters, uh, are applicable. So it's, you know, during, during normal business hours, you know.
Yeah, I believe part of the definition has to do with commercial use. So again, like. Making brownies for yourself, making whatever for your family. It's not a commercial potential activity. Yeah, so the unlicensed activity has to do with the marketing of sale, so.
All right.
Having, having some other kind of is gonna fall under this.
Grainess of the. Everything is interesting.
Yeah, that's your point. I mean, it would be nice if licensing was a little bit easier, looking faster, but for me, that's a statement for that.
I don't really have anything else right now, but I think this was a decent conversation. Uh, I'm not sure I'm ready to go forward first. I think I'm gonna have more questions in the future.
I think it's a logical step, you know, the first, actually retailers or the first.
Yeah, and I would obviously encourage you to reach out to, um, our local retailer, uh, Just Breathe. Uh, he's also head of the Cannabis Association in New York, so can provide kind of a industry. Viewpoint as well, but certainly the legal retailers are feeling that their sales are being impacted by the illicit market. Might be a good.
I feel like also they have to come in at a higher price because they.
Pay taxes.
Yeah.
Yeah, they're being undercut for sure, yeah.
Buying a huge.
All right, if we don't have anything else right now, um, thank you all for taking the time to discuss this.
Okay.
Guys, new adjournment, thank you. Motion, I don't think I need one. Adjournment, motion to adjourn.
Second.
All right, done.